Okay, we'll open the public hearing, which is on ordinance number 2015-07-067. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for premier entertainment of Illinois doing business as Flamingo Slots, 1720 Philo Road, Suite B. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this hearing, in this hearing? Mr. Madigan?
I just need to recuse myself.
Okay. Mr. Ammons?
So, I have a public input card from Wei Zoo, but I didn't know if that was, you wanted to speak at this time? Because it's on the, it was on the Jennifer Committee of the Hold also, I thought.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe you want to wait?
This is the public hearing. Apparently, no one wants to talk at the public hearing, so I will close the hearing. Like, I'd like to call the meeting of the special, a special meeting of the Urbana City Council. First, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing? Here. Petitions and Communications, I have Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood.
I had a question regarding V, Ordinance Number 2015-07-067, and that's V. And I guess procedurally, I don't know how, an ordinance approving a special use permit. Do I read that? Or do I just say what my question is?
Well, they're asking for a special use permit, which the staff will explain what the details are.
When we get there, yeah.
What is your question?
Some people talked to me about this from that, from that area, and they didn't know anything about this. And a change is going to be made from single-family to multi-family in their area. And they said, "Well, how can they do that? And we don't even know anything about it. And procedurally, what should have been done? And these people don't know anything about what's going to be happening in their area." And I said, "Well, maybe y'all should come tonight and see what's going on here." I said, "Well, I will ask the question, so y'all watch and see what they're going to do about this." They said, "Well, probably we won't be able to do anything about it." I said, "Well, I guess homeless people need someplace to go." And they asked, "Well, y'all go see where it's going to be." And I guess they found out where the house is going to be. They're not going to build a new house. It's going to be the old Marlin's house, apparently. But apparently, they're going to change from single-family to multi-family in their area, and they didn't even know anything about it. And so that means that apparently, if it's a special use permit, will it only be that? So apparently, if y'all talk about it tonight, maybe the people in the area will know what's going to happen in their own area. There were several people talked to me about it. And I live there. I said, "Well, talk to Mr. Ammons." And I don't know to get, get an opportunity to call you yet or not, so we'll see what happens. But they didn't know anything about what's going to happen. So I said, "I will bring the question up tonight at the meeting."
It, um, it will be explained when the staff goes, gets to that point. Thank you, we'll try to answer your questions.
So I don't know if I'm going to vote on this tonight as this is a done deal or what. But these people didn't know.
Well, we'll see. We'll see. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else want to talk to the Urbana City Council for this meeting? Okay, we will move on. Ordinance Number 2015-07-065. An ordinance approving a major variance to allow a reduction of the required number of automobile parking spaces from between five and seven to four spaces in the city's B1 Neighborhood Business District. Yes?
Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this case.
Okay. We have Kevin Garcia to explain this.
Good evening. I see we have a long meeting tonight, so I will try and keep this as brief as I can. So this case, as was just mentioned, is a very, a major variance to reduce the required number of automobile parking spaces from between five and seven to four spaces at 303 West Griggs Street in the B1 Neighborhood Business District. The building at 303 West Griggs Street is currently classified and used as a mail-order business. On the front, forty percent of the building is used for mail-order record sales, with a small portion used for mail-order bicycle-related sales. The rear sixty percent of the building is used as warehousing space for that business. In 2001, the petitioner, Jeff Merritt, obtained a conditional use permit to operate as a mail-order business in, in that district. Here is a picture of the existing building. The, the entire lot is just over eight thousand square feet, and the building takes up between eighty-five and ninety percent of that lot. You'll notice on the left side, there's a garage door opening, and the applicant would like to remove that garage area as part of a renovation, which would restore the facade, the front facade of the building, and repair the roof, both of which are, are in pretty bad shape. The applicant would like to turn that garage area into a second storefront, which would have approximately nine hundred square feet of low-intensity retail use. And there'd be little to no onsite sales from the, the type of use that the petitioner is looking to rent that space out, out for. Now, according to the existing conditional use permit, that garage space was supposed to be used to provide off-street parking for the site. There were four off-street parking spaces that, that the current building would require. And obviously, removing that garage would then remove those, those four spaces. And the applicant has, pardon me, the applicant proposes to offset the removal of those four spaces by leasing four spaces in nearby parking lots, which is allowed by our zoning ordinance. This garage hasn't really been used for the past ten years as anything but, but storage for the, for the businesses that exist inside there. And the applicant, therefore, feels that the four off-street spaces in, in nearby lots would be sufficient to meet the parking demand for this building. Now, depending on the intensity of the future retail space, the amount of off-street parking required by our ordinance would be between five spaces and seven spaces. So that's, that's why the, the variance request says between five and seven, reducing that down to four. On June 17th, the ZBA heard this case, and they voted five to zero to forward the case to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. The, this, this property is located really close to downtown Urbana. It's just one block west on the south side of the street of the Boneyard Creek Park. There we go. So it's the, so the building is this one that I'm highlighting here. This square is around the, the building at 303, and then an adjacent commercial property right there. The zoning in the area is a mix of residential, of varying densities, and also commercial. Let me see, it's sort of in this reverse C shape. That is the, the purple area is, is the downtown Business District, and then it's surrounded by R4 residential, and then it's in a little pocket of, of business. The comprehensive plan identifies this area. It's sort of on the, on the cusp between central business, as I just mentioned, and then the residential area. So you see the property highlighted there. And we, we feel that its continued use as a low-intensity neighborhood business is compatible with the, with the designation identified in the comprehensive plan. This building was, it was developed a long time ago, and our records show that it's been occupied by a laundry service before that. It was, I believe it was an Ace Hardware Store. And it appears to have been a commercial building for, really for as long as it's existed, and has never provided more off-street parking than could be accommodated in that garage. Any new commercial use of the building that would be more intense than, than a mail-order business would probably require that additional off-street parking spaces be provided, which can't be accommodated on the site. So really, any reuse of the site would probably require parking, a parking variance, like is being requested, and, and/or measures to offset the off-street parking requirements. The applicant has proposed several measures to mitigate the effects of removing the garage and removing those parking spaces. First, as I mentioned, he would provide four parking spaces in, in one of two lots that are located within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the property. Second, they would install up to eight bicycle parking spaces in the area. Here, I'll show you. So in this area, right, right in front of the garage, in that paved area, they would provide up to eight bicycle parking spaces. And our zoning ordinance does allow for bicycle parking to offset, for automobile parking. And then finally, they would close this area in front, which is the existing curb cut and the driveway, and then they would replant, they would plant that area with grass, install a new curb. And then the bonus for the city would be, we'd get an additional street parking spaces. We think that, that these three accommodations are reasonable, and they'd be desirable from the city's standpoint. I will briefly run through the variance criteria, as we do in these cases. The first is that the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege, because the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances. We feel that since there is no practical way to add off-street parking to the site, and any change from the current use would require a variance or mitigation, that these are special circumstances which make this variance necessary. Number two, the variance requested was not the result of a situation created by the petitioner. As I said, the site was developed a long time ago, prior to the current owner purchasing the property. Number three, is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We feel that with the building being renovated and the facade being improved, this would actually help to preserve and enhance the character of the neighborhood and not be detrimental to it. Number four, is that the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. The, the business going forward would operate mostly in, in the same manner that it has for the past ten years, and during that time, it has not been a nuisance, and we've received no complaints about the business, so we don't feel that it would be a nuisance. Number five is that the variance represents generally the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. While, while parking requirements could potentially be provided by leasing the five to seven spaces in a nearby parking lot, we feel that it would be unnecessary for the proposed use, since the intensity will be very similar to what it has been. Also, we find that the, the offsetting mitigation, the providing of the four spaces, the closing of the curb cut, and the adding bike parking spaces would be, would be a benefit to the, to customers and to the neighborhood. So, that concludes my report. The, you have the following options in this case. You can approve the variance based on the findings outlined in the memo. You can approve the variance along with terms and, certain terms and conditions, or you can deny the request. As I mentioned, the zoning board of appeals voted five to zero in, to recommend approval for the variance, subject to the following conditions. The first is that the applicant will remove the existing driveway and curb cut, install a new curb, and fill in the right-of-way between the street and sidewalk with grass or some plants. And the second is that the applicant will reach an agreement with a property owner or property owners within six hundred feet to secure four or more parking spaces for use of the business. I can take any questions yet.
Dennis?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. You know, I mostly, I support, you know, this change in use of the building. It's a nice old historic building in an area which is, because of the recent development of the Boneyard, is actually seeing some new uses and reactivation of buildings that have originally been storage places, and now they're coming into possible retail use, so that's real plus. And I imagine that because it's close to the Boneyard, if it's going to become a coffee shop or a roastery, that a lot of the traffic that will come to it is pretty much going to be biking and walking associated with, you know, people who are ambling in the downtown area. So, one of my questions is that if the, if the closing of the curb cut into a, a curbed space allows two more, two more cars to park in front of the building, if that's what we get by making that closure, can that count as two spaces which they're providing, even though it's not on their property itself?
Technically, I, I think the answer is no, but that's certainly something to consider just as you make your decision.
Right.
But we can't count on-street parking in lieu of off-street parking.
Right. But there's, there seems to be plenty of on-street parking, because there's not a, there's not a parking restriction along that block, is there?
No, there's not.
Right. So, and then, to what degree is it required that they show assurance to the city, or the Planning Commission, Commission, or to the Community Development Department, that they have indeed rented or made lease arrangements for nearby parking lots? Some of the parking lots are heavily used by other employers, and I think that, I think the lot to the north that borders the track is pretty well heavily used, and there might be, I can't remember if there are reserved spots along that or not, but I don't know what there's, how much of that is available. So, if they have difficulty in securing the rights to that, and they're, does that jeopardize their program?
Well, I suppose if that, if that were added as a, as a condition, that they do obtain leases for four spaces, then I suppose that would, or that could jeopardize the variance.
Well, because they're, because they're creating two new spaces on the street, it would seem unfair to, to sink the business, you know. Well, I don't know. Maybe they're going to have no problem making those, those leases. All right, the, my other question is, it looks like there's a pretty tall ham-operating radio tower in front of the building. Is that still in use? Does the owner still use that? And what's the, the likelihood of that being removed if it's not necessary?
I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, it would be great to take it down if it's no longer in use.
Yeah, I agree.
Those are my questions.
Is there a motion? Diane?
I move approval of ordinance number 2015-07-065.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any other questions?
And I would add with the two conditions that were attached to it.
Oh, yeah, and one of those.
Dennis?
Yeah, so one of the conditions is parking, isn't that correct? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, the, the second condition was that they do obtain the lease for four or more parking spaces from adjacent lots.
And does the City Council have the, the right to, to reduce that to three?
I suppose so.
Okay. So I'll make an amendment, a friendly amendment, that we reduce the number of spaces to three, because they're providing two brand-new spaces along the street. It seems like, like it'd be, I don't expect that it's going to be a place where a lot of people are going to be pulling cars in. I could be wrong, but...
I'll, I'll second that motion, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a friendly amendment to the, okay.
I think, I think it's friendly because it kind of assists the people to...
The original motion was Diane, and then Aaron?
Is that acceptable to you as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you got a friendly amendment here.
Yeah. The fewer cars we have...
Any other questions?
The better.
Or friendly or, I hope not friendly amendment? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? He's not here. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 2015-07-066. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois, rezoning of a 0.187 acre parcel at 703 North Matthews Avenue from the R2 Single Family Residential District to the R4 Medium Density Multiple Family Residential District. And we have Christopher Marks to explain this one. Thank you.
Okay, the following is a request for rezoning of the property at 703 North Matthews from R2 Single Family Residential to the R4 Medium Density Multiple Family Residential. It's also a request for a special use permit to operate a home for adjustment, women's shelter, transitional housing for women at the site upon the rezoning of that particular parcel. So just to briefly describe the subject property, it's located at 703 North Matthews in the far west, west side of the city. Okay, the exhibits were not on the PDF that I transferred over. Should I, shall I go online to obtain them really quickly?
If you can.
While he's bringing that up, I should also point out that the two items are linked, and I was unsure if you'd called both items.
Well, we're going through one at a time.
Okay, his presentation will cover both holistically, however.
The question was raised about public notice. So was there public notice to people who lived in the area that are finding out about this?
He can address that, I suppose, as part of, I, I apologize, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that you understood we were doing the presentation together, but he can address all of that.
Okay. I can address the public notice in just a minute or two, as I describe the, quickly describe the site. It's a single-family residential household, surrounded by mostly residential homes. To the west, you have, to the north and to the west, you have the Crisis Nursery. Farther west across the street, you have a storage facility. To the south, you have the railroad, as well as the President's Hospital, as well. And to the north, you have two vacant lots, one of which, that, that home right there is no longer there, that's, has been, since been demolished. The Crisis Nursery is planning on expanding into that lot. They obtained a success, successfully obtained a conditional use permit to expand that way. They're in the process of acquiring this parcel as well. The parcel just to the west is vacant, it is owned by the hospital. The surrounding area is zoned mostly R2. To the south and to the west is B3, with the railroad being I N 1, obviously. So the request is to change the zoning from R2 to R4, because the petitioner, which is CU At Home, which is a organization in the Champaign-Urbana area that provides services for, for the homeless and for people who are economically distressed as well, they provide several services, but they would like to open a, in a partnership with the President's Covenant, not the hospital, but the, the Nun's Covenant, a home that allows for transitional housing to bring women from, who are on the brink of homelessness, or being without a home, back to being independent with services and therapy as well. Their proposal would be to convert the home, which I will scroll down just to show just some pictures of the site. So they would not be making many significant changes to the exterior, maybe some slight improvements on the facade or repainting it, but they would not be expanding upon the building, they would not be changing the footprint of the building. In the upstairs of the building, they would plan to add two bedrooms for capacities of four people and three people, respectively. And in the downstairs, they would add another bedroom with, that would have the possibility of being a hospital bed or not, that hasn't been determined yet, but it would be a total of eight bedrooms and one staffer who might be staying in the facility with them at any given moment. So their request is to have the property rezoned, because a dwelling home for adjustment, as listed in the table of uses, is not permitted within the R2 zoning district. It's permitted in the R4 district with a special use permit as well. The dwelling home for adjustment was the classification of the table of uses in Article 5, that was considered most relevant to the proposed use by the applicant. The applicant was, is planning on acquiring the property for indefinite ownership, and would be contracting, is working with a contractor to make changes to bring the facility to be structurally intact and up to all the applicable building safety code, and make it just generally hospitable. So in the event of considering a rezoning request, there have to be something, there has to be consideration of the LaSalle criteria regarding the case of LaSalle National Bank versus County of Cook, in which the Illinois Supreme Court established a list, list of factors that must be considered for rezoning. So the first consideration is the existing land uses and zoning of the nearby property. The existing zoning and land use are residential, surrounding to the north and to the east. And although to the northwest, you have the Crisis Nursery, and to the west, there's a storage facility. Mostly to the northwest, it's residential as well. So the proposed use would still preserve the residential nature of the subject property. And the proposed rezoning is technically, allows for a higher intensity of a district to the south, but towards the south, you have, you know, the, the busy hospital as well, the railroad tracks, and generally B3 to the south of there. Allowing a R4 district there would, would not detract from the sort of buffer that it provides against that busier use to the south along the University Avenue corridor. The next criteria is the extent to which property values are diminished by the restrictions of the ordinance, the difference in value of the property, if it stayed in R2, and the value it would have if it were rezoned to R4. The property's been vacant for several years. I should add that the property was moved, that the house was moved to the property a number of years ago, but the, it's, the home has remained vacant for several years. It's on a block that has had several... but the, it's, the home has remained vacant for several years. It's on a block that has had several targeted home demolition. So the, the block is mostly vacant. It's the last remaining home on the block. So the surrounding property values would perhaps benefit because it's a vacant building, a blighted building that would be filled and with physical improvements to at least provide some improvement of that building to the surrounding neighborhood. Although it should be noted that city staff, and this is not a professional appraisal or there has not been consulting, so these should be considered speculative at best. The next criteria is the extent to which the ordinance promotes the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public. And that generally also goes with the fourth criteria, which is the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the individual property. While the rezoning does enable the property to be zoned to a higher intensity, it would still assist with people who are in a dire economic situation, prevent them from being homeless or going to the street. It would also bring back residential use to an otherwise vacant house or an, you know, an otherwise empty corner of the neighborhood. The petitioner's plan to acquire the property indicates at least a commitment to its maintenance that otherwise is lacking from. The rezoning would also support the comprehensive plan's goal for infill development, and it would still maintain the property's use as, as a home. It does not greatly expand the footprint of the house. And the, it also meets the comprehensive plan's goal of, you know, affordable housing opportunities for residents as well, even though it's not a permanent housing situation for the residents, at least providing them with temp, temporary housing, or I'm sorry, temporary housing allows to help fulfill that, part of that plan. The next criteria is the suitability of the subject property for the zone purposes. The property's vacant status and emptiness of the blocks remaining lots outside of Crisis Nursery would certainly suggest that the lot might be appropriate for a higher density. The absence of any occupancy on this site suggests that it is appropriate to be rezoned to a more accommodating, to a different use. The proximity of the hospital, as well as the Crisis Nursery, act as a a good nearby proximity of service-based operations. So this would not be completely out of, out of sync with what's already going on in that particular corner of the neighborhood. The sixth criteria is the length of time that the property has been vacant as zoned, considered in the context of land development in that area, in the vicinity of the subject property. As I mentioned earlier, the land's been vacant for several years. The lack of development on this property could be due to its R2 zoning or its position on a block that lacks other single-family homes. So if a successful, if the rezoning is considered by the council and approved, there's also the special use permit to which they must apply for, which is being considered concurrently with the rezoning. So for the requirements of a special use permit, that the proposed use is conducive to the public locate, public convenience at this location. CU at Home and the Covenant chose this parcel because of its proximity to the hospital. So if they need to provide immediate medical care to someone that they're assisting, the hospital's right there. It's also close to bus lines along University Avenue to the mass transit. That's important for people who are in transitional home or might be starting a job, might be needing employment and transportation to employment. It also is within close proximity to the churches that, the churches and other, you know, social centers that CU at Home does lots of their outreach at. The next criteria is that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. It would at least provide safety and support for women at risk within the community. It doesn't greatly increase the capacity of the existing structure. It meets the city's square footage requirement for a dwelling space of a boarding and rooming house. The traffic volume, if there would be any traffic, wouldn't be significantly, wouldn't be in a significant addition to the area. The Crisis Nursery does have some, a traffic volume that goes to their site and back. The required off-street parking for this, for this property would be three spaces, which is a condition in the special use permit that they would have to provide off-street parking on their property or make arrangements with another property owner within 600 feet, as required in the zoning ordinance. That might suggest that they could seek an arrangement with another nearby property owner or not. But, so if there would be any automobile requirements for the home's occupants or any staff that would be there, they would also be accounted for. And then the third criteria is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located. As I mentioned earlier, the home will not be significantly altered on its exterior. The, it's still a residential use as well. There are no legal non-conformities to deal with, or there would be no new ones that would be created. And generally, it does not greatly increase the potential volume of, of the home. It should also be, I understand that there are questions brought up about the public notification, and there was a legal ad placed in the news, in the news gazette as well as a mailing sent out to all homes within 250 feet of the parcel as required by the zoning ordinance. And also, it should be mentioned that when the Plan Commission heard this case, that there was a resident who lived nearby that expressed some concern about the home being rezoned. She expressed concern about parking as well as just volume of traffic. And this is also brought up by a member of the Plan Commission, just the possibility that if the parcel is rezoned to R4 and that the special use permit is not, not used, not fulfilled, that the property might be exposed to the, to being redeveloped for multifamily units or to a more dense development. And we, we did want to point out that it still is a relatively small lot. The surrounding lots are owned by different entities, so if, if someone acquired the lot and wanted to move to the west, they would have to acquire that western lot from the hospital. If they wanted to move to the north, well, Crisis Nursery is taking up almost all those lots if they're not expanding onto it. So that would be one thing. Also, that the, you know, there are still requirements and, and development regulations in the zoning ordinance that would limit the amount, that would constrain the amount of, what sort of development could be placed on a lot that's small. They would still have to meet the required setbacks. There would still be requirements with the open space ratio and the floor area ratio. So we did mention that. The, the Plan Commission, I think, also came to that conclusion as well. But, so there was a concern by, you know, a nearby resident. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward both requests to the Urbana City Council with recommendation of approval. The rezoning request was recommended for approval, but also the special use permit was recommended approval with two conditions, that the site is not redeveloped to a higher density and the home does not exceed the maximum allowable occupancy of eight residents and one staffer as proposed in the application, and that the second stipulation be that the site provides onsite parking spaces or makes accommodations within 600 feet of the subject property with a parking plan subject to the review and approval of the zoning administrator and city engineer. So with that, are there any questions that I might answer?
Aaron?
So thank you, Christopher, for your presentation. I've heard several concerns from residents about this. And so it's, it's causing me some pause here because I want to make sure that the individuals who have raised these concerns feel like they are actually getting the answers to their questions. Now, I know we put out the legal ad and the mailer and stuff like that to the people who live within 250 feet of the property in question. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I think people who would be concerned, some of them live beyond 250 feet. So I, I really look for us to have, if we can, some sort of meeting in an area, one of the churches or something close by and invite some more people to come out. I think it at least allows us to say, listen, we've done our due diligence here to try to reach out to everybody and to answer all the questions. That's one aspect of this. The other part of it, as I looked at the map, and I do see what was brought to my attention earlier about spot zoning. And so I do understand that Carl owns property near there.
Not Carl at President's.
President's, I'm sorry.
No, it's.
Freudian slip, I guess, right? But we also have the Crisis Nursery. So it does look like it's somewhat landlocked for whoever would own that, that property. But the high-density question is still, I think, a relevant question. So I, I just think some of those things need to be answered before I would feel comfortable moving forward with this. I also wanted to know if you know, I don't know, maybe if you have the answer to this at this point. How many of these types of, of homes exist within our, within Urbana, and where are they? Would you happen to have any idea?
Well, the, the exact location, CU at Home operates, I believe, two other, the applicant is also here if they, if you care to ask, ask her any questions.
Absolutely.
They operate, I believe, two other homes in the area. They prefer not to provide the location of, of these homes for, for the safety of the people to whom the services they provide. I believe there's one other property in, in Urbana that provides a similar service purpose that I only came across today, but I'm, I'm not familiar with its, its exact location as well, to be frank. But I could certainly check more into that if.
Diane?
You're probably thinking of the Courage Connection or Center for Women in Transition.
Yes.
I was curious too what their zoning was. It seems to me they offer similar.
They had an address listed for a parcel near Carl, which was owned M I C, but that's probably where their offices are located. At their, the actual location of where they might provide some of their services, like I mentioned, is probably kept in private. But I'd, I'd have to look further into it.
So.
Aaron?
I just wanted to finish up here. I do think that it's, considering what's being proposed, I can see the, the benefits of being close to the hospital, daycare, the bus line and all those things. And I think those are relevant issues. Certainly, we want to do whatever we can to help our homeless population. I'm not opposing that. But the concerns that have been raised, I think, need to be spoken to a little bit, and a little more in detail. And I, I'm a little concerned also about, it says that as long as this would not jeopardize the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the area over there, I, I think it's a little, it's a little concerning to me how the city comes to that conclusion without getting more input from the people who live directly in that area, right? You know, so that's some, that's why I have some of the concerns that I'm raising to you, raising now. And, you know, geographically, I know that's a concern to me. I, I want to make sure that if we're building transitional houses or places for people who, who are homeless, I don't think they should be in a, shouldn't be oversaturated in a, in a sort of geographical region. They should be spread out over the city, you know? So that's just one of the concerns that I was wanting to raise.
Eric?
So I guess this is a question for Jim, for our attorney. I understand the reasons for the locations of these other properties not to be divulged in a public meeting. And this one has to be made public now, but presumably it won't be, you know, that'll, there won't be a public record, you know, additional public records later. But I wanted to ask Jim if, since there is a question about the locations and about the distribution throughout the city, could that question be answered in an executive session? Or is that, is that, is that one of the categories that we could take?
I don't believe so. It doesn't involve the acquisition or sale of real estate. And to the extent the city may be contributing funds through social service funding, that, that information theoretically, depending on how, what information is included in the social service funding application, that information might actually be available through a FOIA request. So without going back into the statute, I don't believe there's an exemption for that in the Open Meetings Act.
I wonder, I wonder if it would be possible to, without pinpointing, if it would be possible to, I don't know, give a distribution of which wards they're in or, or whatever. I mean, I understand the concern about, you know, saturating a particular neighborhood or particular neighborhoods with a facility like this, but I also understand the need for the, the need for, for not broadcasting the location. And I, I just wonder how this, how these can be reconciled.
Dennis, and then Diane.
Diane, you had, you were, you had so much more energy in your raised hands. I'm going to defer to you and then I'll come back.
Well, I can answer your question, Mr. Jacobson. According to the Plan Commission minutes, the other three homes are located in the city of Champaign.
That's right.
Undisclosed, but they are not in the city of Urbana.
That's right. You just have to read the details.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. You know, it's sort of interesting. I, I think that, I don't see a dwelling with eight people in it as being an oversaturated experience for a neighborhood, especially when you consider that there's, that we're giving, we're creating for people a safe haven from possibly domestic violence or issues that have caused young, young women or women with children to lose their home, and they're looking now for a place to transition to while they establish themselves in the community again. And they may indeed be establishing themselves in the very community that they, that they're, that this building is located in, maybe, you know, five blocks away, three blocks away. And this is not kind of a harmful aggregation of individuals that I would say might appear. You know, we had so many concerns about locating gaming institutions in this community, and this hardly, I think, you know, comes to the same level of, of concern for the, for the city council. Let me just ask, looking at the, the Google map of the, the area, we have an exempt empty lot next to the proposed building, and we have what looks like going to be a transition of housing directly north of it on the two lots because we expect the childcare center to be constructing enlargement of their property.
They will be expanding into the lot that has the now demolished house. They will be expanding forward that way, that way. And then this lot, they are acquiring, but I don't believe they have any plans to expand onwards onto that.
And this map shows that this is exempt property. Is that because it's exempt because it's owned by the hospital?
Yeah, and the hospital is donating that north, that north parcel, not the west one, but the north one.
So this entire block, which is trapezoidal shaped, is really no longer, none of it is going to be single-family homes anymore. And so we're, I don't see this as being spot, spot zoning in the same way that if it were all single-family residential, that would be. So, I mean, to me, this looks like, more like community-oriented use in this entire block. And it's right next to the railroad track. There's not going to be any residential below it. So I, I'm less, I'm less concerned. And I would say that I would be willing to allow this special use permit and to go ahead with the program.
Charlie?
I sort of find myself sort of halfway in between Aaron and Dennis here in that where homes like this have occurred in my neighborhood, it's the impact of the cars more than anything else. Many years ago, people didn't, every individual didn't have their own car. What's happened in today's society is that, that almost everybody does have their own car. And, and so you, you know, a house with nine people could potentially have nine cars. That may not be the case here. It's likely not the case. So for me, it's finding adequate off-street parking and making sure there isn't an impact from, from a lot of traffic on this particular block, which is probably, you know, fairly quiet. you know, fairly quiet for the folks that live along, that whose, whose house, home's front, front, uh, front church street. Uh, Hill Street, uh, takes most of the traffic, uh, in, in this neighborhood. The, the other thing I should point out is that I believe that whole alleyway from Row Mine to North Matthews is now, um, we, we, we vacated that about a month ago, and so half of that alleyway, I guess, goes to the house, as I understand it. Is, is that the petitioner's understanding? Does petitioner know about the alley vacation? Okay, yeah. Um, so for me, I'd, I'd like to know exactly where their, their parking's gonna be and, and, uh, what the, what the actual impact is. One thing we could do, and this would, uh, um, help address Erin's issue, is we could just send this to committee now and, and, uh, and go after some, go after these questions, uh, that Erin and, and myself have raised.
Diane.
I, I, I'd support sending it to committee, and I would add to the questions, um, I did have a concern about spot zoning. If you look at the zoning map, um, it is surrounded by R2 zoning. Even the Crisis Nursery is R2 because, uh, daycare facilities are allowed as a conditional use. The, although to call the Crisis Nursery a, strictly a daycare is a stretch because it's, operates 24/7 and that people can stay for multiple, uh, children can be there for multiple days. So we seem to have stretched the definitions of the uses on, um, the R2 lots where Crisis Nursery is located. So I'm wondering, rather than changing the zoning to a higher density, which I do, do think is problematic because it, it, it makes one parcel, R, R4 in the C of R2, um, I wonder if we can't find a way to keep the R2, um, but accommodate a facility like this because this use itself could be temporary. You know, there's, this is not a permanent use of this site. It depends on the organization occupying this house. Um, community living, I've had some conversations with Christopher about this. Community living facility is allowed in R2, but that's a, apparently a permanent residential use. But I just wonder if there's any other way to accommodate the intended use but keep the zoning, um, R2. And I would, I would take issue with the contention that R2 is a, uh, the reason that the house has not been occupied. I walked all around the site today and looked at the house very carefully, and the condition of the house itself is the biggest deterrent to being occupied at the moment, not the zoning. And it's a lovely, it could be a lovely home if it were repaired, but it, it's, if you look at the outside, it needs a lot of repairs. And, and so I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept the premise that R2 is the reason the house is vacant. It's vacant because it's, it requires a lot of work. And then my other comment would be, or question is, um, the, the plan calls for occupancy by a total of eight women plus a staff member, but there's, there's no mention of accommodation for children, but in the Planning Commission minutes, it was mentioned, they would have the resources of the Crisis Nursery and, you know, support for the children. So does that eight include children possibly occupying that house?
No, the, the mention of the nearby, the proximity of the Crisis Nursery was, I mean, it's a, it's a loose secondary, I mean, or it's a, I, I, it's a loose complementary, um, location, I guess, but there will be no children that will be housed in, in the unit.
So these are all eight single homeless women?
Adults, yes.
Adults.
Or, yes.
I think Dennis and then Eric.
Uh, and, uh, in this conversation, did we say that they required to have three onsite, uh, on property onsite parking spots?
Off-street parking spaces.
Off-street, yeah.
Potentially onsite or if they made an arrangement with, um, a nearby property and within 600 feet, yeah.
And looking at the site plan, they seem to have a pretty big backyard, which I don't imagine they're gonna be using as a backyard. Uh, is that a possible site for a parking?
Yes.
Facility? So, uh, do they have a plan for adding parking in the back of the house on the north, south side?
They have a, I mean, they, they've talked about possible ways they might approach that. They don't have a specific, um, specific plan laid out, but, uh, we just put it in the, that's a stipulation in the special use permit, that they would be required to submit a parking plan that's approved by our city engineer and zoning administrator to meet that. Part of it is if they, there is, there is one or two possibilities of how they might be able to accommodate off-street parking with a, a different property. So we gave them that flexibility with the condition, so.
Eric.
So I, I, on, purely on the merits of the proposal, I would support this. On the other hand, I do think we need to be sensitive to the neighbors, but I would add one other thing. Uh, it, it's very, very common for neighbors to be very concerned about any type of supportive housing, whether it be halfway houses for, you know, people who are coming out of addiction or, or whatever. And, but the typical experience is that those fears don't really come to pass, that the property values around those homes do not go down. We have in, in our neighborhood, uh, about three blocks from me, in, in my ward, uh, Canaan Baptist Church has a halfway house for, for men who are, uh, who are coming out of, uh, rehab and, and need support before going. And the relationship between the residents in that house and the neighbors is very, very good. And the, um, and the property values around there, we don't have the assessor here tonight, but I think we could ask, the property values around there, I think, have not, have not declined. So, um, I, I, I believe that ultimately we should approve this, but I do think that we should give the neighbors the, uh, uh, you know, full opportunity to, uh, talk out the issues and, and talk out the issues with the people who, who will run the facility.
Diane.
Well, that's a good precedent was, what's the zoning on, on that particular property that you're mentioning?
I'll, I'll have to check on that, but, uh, but that is a good precedent, and in fact, maybe we could get some of the, some of the neighbors around that facility to come out and talk to the neighbors here and, uh, uh, provide some, uh, provide some input into what it's like.
Erin.
So I don't know if Canaan's church status changes that for them, so that's possibly one of the reasons why that, um, wouldn't be the precedent that we think it might be. I don't know, but I'm sure that's a part of their organization, uh, part of the church's, um, I don't know, its umbrella. Um, I want to make sure that, I, I, I'm trying to articulate the concerns that I've heard from constituents. And so even the people that I've talked to are extremely sensitive and open to the concerns and want to help, uh, women in transition. So, uh, I just think there was just a couple of details. There are some concerns about parking, the cars, the impact. Is there a number of off-street parking, uh, spaces that are required for residents now? What, what number would that be? If you, if you buy a home, is there a certain number of, of, uh, spaces that you're supposed to have?
Well, for new homes, yes. Uh, this, this house was moved with, uh, for whatever reason, back when it was moved, uh, it, uh, there was not off-street parking that was installed at, at the time, but, uh, you know, that's the condition that, that's faced with it now. So there is a requirement, uh, yes, but it's, I mean, it's not much, these are three spaces as opposed to, you know, two or one spaces, depending on how many bedrooms are in the home and, and, uh, parking requirements for the district.
So I think it's reasonable to ask, I don't, I keep forgetting her name, and I would like to ask, um, the lady some questions.
Oh.
Who, and, but you could stay there, I guess, you know?
Well, no, she'll, uh, she'll, she'll have the opportunity to, to speak after you're done asking me any questions.
Well, I just wanted to, um, to find out if there was some idea about what, where the parking would be. That's one of the concerns that was raised. Um, and if there was any sort of, uh, conversation between Crisis Nursery and, uh, See You at Home about the, uh, about some sort of agreement, uh, for parking. Um, I mean, those were some of the things that were, that were raised. I do agree, uh, the transitional homes that near, that are in Champaign that I'm aware of, uh, I certainly have not heard of any problems with those. I, I'm very familiar with Canaan, the safe house, and I have not heard of any problems. I do think it has a lot to do with how those facilities are managed, uh, and, uh, how, uh, you know, just how well they are managed. I think that has a lot to do with it. But I do think that it's important to hear from, um, the people who live there, and I'm wondering if See You at Home, even if not the city, if See You at Home would be willing to have some sort of community conversation over there just to sort of address some of the concerns by, uh, some of the residents over there before we went to move forward.
Did you want to say something, Lori?
If you'd like, I can respond to some of the questions.
Sure.
That came up.
Please.
Um, going from the end up, Canaan Church is zoned R5 where this kind of use is a permitted use. Um, and then, uh, just to specify, community living facility is, has a very specific definition provided by the state. Uh, we use that same definition, and then it relies on, um, a portion of that definition is that the residents are a service-dependent population, meaning mental or physical disabilities. So I think those are the two things that I wanted to be sure I provided answers for.
Okay. Is there a motion to, um, do you want to a- ask questions of the operator? Okay.
Sure, yes.
Okay, come on up.
Thanks, Chris.
Hi.
So do you have, uh, any sort of idea or plan for parking?
We do. We actually drew a map with three parking spaces on the south edge of the property, just off of the railroad, small road that's beside the tracks, so on the southeast portion of the property.
So you have three parking places?
Yes.
Off, off-street parking places?
Off-street.
And then, uh, is there parking allowed in that area there on Matthews, on the sort of east side of that? Or is that not, um, available for parking?
There are no parking restrictions on that road that I'm aware of.
Okay. So even if there was the, if there's eight or nine people there and the possibility of nine cars, which I really don't think it's going to be that, that case, but, um, in case there were, I mean, visitors, all types of different things take place, um, based upon what we see here, I, do you feel like there'd be enough parking for the residents who live there as well as the individuals who live around that area?
I do. And, and in four years of helping to house and support 34 people as of today, we've had exactly zero with vehicles. One acquired a vehicle while living in our home.
Okay. That's very good information to know. Thank you. And, um, there was one other question. Would you be open to having a, um, community conversation with some of the residents there to, to maybe answer some of their questions and dispel some of their concerns?
A community conversation, yes.
With the residents there in that area?
With the residents who live in, in the neighborhood, certainly.
Okay, alright. There's, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, do you want to move to approve this, or do you want to move to keep it in committee?
I was gonna ask about a timeline. If we move this to committee, maybe answer some questions, give you guys an, have a conversation with you and some of the residents. Maybe, you may be able to dispel some of this just with a, a conversation with a small group of people. Um, what, is this gonna hurt this project moving forward if we postpone it for a week or two weeks?
We're already two months late, so we'll just continue to be later. Honestly, we were slighted, slighted to start construction at the beginning of June.
Start construction?
Rehab.
Rehab?
Yeah.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
What exactly do you all plan to do to the facade of the house? Or to the house in particular?
Siding and roofing, certainly. The outside, bathrooms, kitchen, inside.
Okay.
Eric.
So I guess we'll be back, this is a special meeting of the city council, with, but we'll be back with a regular meeting of the council in just one week. Uh, do you, do you, uh, do you think that a week would be, uh, suffici- could, could this be turned around in a week and come back to the, uh, council in just a week?
I don't want to say that I can actually speak for the residents that I have spoken with, but I will reach out to them immediately and, um, and ask them to try to make themselves available to ans- to ask any questions. So I think it's reasonable, considering the concerns that I've heard. Um, I don't know what else would come up in that conversation, though. So I do think that would be reasonable, yes.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
So I'll move to send this to council next week.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any other discussion? Uh, would the clerk please call the roll? Just a voice vote is fine, for both of these, right? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll put both of these items on the agenda for next week, and we'll have some feedback from the people who have asked questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, ordinance number 2015 dash 07 dash 068, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement at 3106 North Cunningham Avenue for Green Vistas LLC, um, DGS Properties LLC, Stark Excavating Incorporated.
Before Max gets started, I will point out that, um, we did not notice on the agenda that this requires a public hearing. So the prudent thing to do here is to start from scratch, redo the, the public notice in the newspaper, uh, actually post the agenda properly with the notice for public hearing, and bring this back to council on August 3rd, I think is the first available time we can, we can get back. Um, but we would like, since all the parties are in the room, we would like to go through the presentation and have any questions answered, and then that way, uh, the next meeting will be just the public hearing and any other follow-up and the vote.
There's a further point of order. Uh, there was no vote to, seeing that this is a council meeting, albeit special, there was no vote to take these two items in omnibus fashion, which requires unanimous vote, and...
Okay. How about we, you, you're talking about the previous two, right?
Right.
Well, it was just a discussion, okay. Why don't we, um, split the vote, then? We'll vote on ordinance number 2015 dash 07 dash 066. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and then ordinance number 2015 oh seven oh six seven, which is a special use permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes, okay. Um, this is your August 3rd presentation? You're gonna, you're just gonna do the presentation now, and then the actual vote will be after a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
One moment.
So as Lori mentioned, we do have representatives from Stark Excavating Inc. here tonight to answer, um, any of the more in-depth technical questions. Um, also, um, just to know, all parties involved have agreed to the annexa- annexation agreement as drafted. So the parcel we are focusing on in this agreement is unused lot at 3106 North Cunningham, located between Oaks Road and Airport, or Airport Road along the east side of Cunningham. You can see a picture of the lot here in Exhibit D. It is the former site of the Malibu Lounge. This parcel was the subject of an annexa- annexation agreement with, uh, Mervis Industries in 2012. However, Mervis Industries was never the owner of record of that site, and that agreement is now considered invalid. Under the proposed agreement, the parcel would be rezoned from County B4 General Business to City IN1 Light Industrial Office. Also under the agreement, the parcel would be, uh, the current owner of the lot, Green Vistas LLC, who has owned the lot since 2010, plans to sell the property to a developer, DGS Properties LLC. DGS Properties would then lease the site to Stark Excavating Inc., which would utilize it for several uses. These uses include recycling and related sales, as well as the manufacture and sale of asphalt and concrete running mix. Those uses would be allowed through a special use permit issued to Stark Excavating. Oh, and also, um, one moment. I, I did mention the recycling and sales, great. And the proposed agreement would also provide Stark Excavating with a conditional use permit that would allow for the use of a construction yard on-site. Exhibit A, we see the subject property. It's highlighted in blue. Uh, it's located along Cunningham, which is characterized by a mix of commercial and industrial uses. Just to the south of the subject property is a lot currently owned by Mervis Industries, and that is a recycling center akin to be one- and that is a recycling center akin to the one being proposed with the special use permit. To the north is a lot operated by Ennis Excavation as a construction yard and also a construction equipment sales center. Exhibit B shows us that the lots to the south and the west of the subject property are also zoned city IN one. Just to note, that the lot to the north in the county is zone B four general business, and the lot to the east is zone agricultural to county, but those don't appear on our maps because we have these city zones on our maps. Page one of exhibit C shows the land use designations as listed in the two thousand and five comprehensive plan. Now, the subject property is actually split in the comprehensive plan. The western portion of the lot is designated as regional business, and the eastern portion of the lot is designated as residential. Just scooting down to exhibit F. This is the site plan as proposed by the parties to the agreement. We see here the proposed future plant area for the mentioned manufacturing processes, and just below that would be the proposed recycling area. We see two proposed material storage areas, and those reflect the construction, sorry, the construction yard uses as requested in the conditional use permit. On this site plan, we see there is a parking lot with six spaces listed, meeting the requirement of the Urbana zoning ordinance. And then we also have currently two buildings on the lot. The one on the northern side of the lot here, that would be preserved, while the lot in the southern portion, the building on the southern portion of the lot, that would be demolished. As planned, there would be a built area of five thousand, oh, just one moment here, just over five thousand three hundred and seventy-eight square feet, and the FAR of the lot would be a zero, point zero one five, point zero one five, which is far below the maximum allowable FAR of two in the IN one district. Stark Excavating's planned aggregate recycling and sales, as well as concrete ready mix and asphalt manufacturing and sales, would meet the criteria for a special use permit. These include, one, that the use is convenient at the proposed location, two, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the district that it'll be located in, and three, the proposed use conforms to all applicable regulations. Responding to these criteria, the proposed use would serve the region and be conveniently accessible via I seventy-four and US forty-five, which is Cunningham. This is important as the deliverables from these uses would be both picked up and delivered. The proposed uses would be compatible with the recycling center located just to the south, and the agreement ensures that all local, state, and federal regulations are met. The proposed uses will benefit the public and that it will divert materials from demolition operations and reuse those materials in construction projects. The same three criteria are also required for the conditional use permit that would allow the use of a construction yard by Stark Excavating. These yards are identified as the material storage areas on the site plan. The proposed use would meet this criteria by similarly serving the region via I seventy-four and US forty-five. The proposed use would also be compatible with the construction yard and equipment sales center located just to the north, and it would similarly meet all other applicable local, state, and federal regulations. Furthermore, the agreement would ensure that the parties to this agreement would appropriately screen these storage areas, and that they would be treated with dust control measures. Additional regulations of the agreement include that its parties will be required to extend the municipal water line located to the south of the property to its northern periphery. Furthermore, they agreed to install a culvert to catch water shedding from properties to the north. They will also preserve existing ditches to convey water east to west. The parties to the agreement will be required to utilize the existing driveway and travel patterns located on the lot, and will also agree to pave all parking lots, access drives, off-street loading areas, and parking spaces with a hard surface. The proposed uses under the agreement are not expected to have a negative impact on the neighbors, as all of its operations will meet current regulations, including any permitting required by the I E P A, minimizing the creation of dust and noise. The proposed uses will also match the commercial industrial character of this stretch of Cunningham. On a broader picture, the proposed agreement will help to expand the city's tax base, and it will provide a unique range of services to the region on one lot. It is important to determine that if the proposed agreement matches the factors established in the LaSalle Vico County case, when it comes to the remapping proposed. These factors are paramount in evaluating the legal validity of a zoning classification for a particular property. An explanation of each criteria and the proposed agreement's relationship with that criteria is as follows. One, the existing land uses and zoning of the nearby property. The proposed rezoning is consistent with Stark's planned uses, and it is intended to bring the zoning of the tract into conformance with the zoning of the properties located to the south and the west. Two, the extent to which property values are diminished by the restrictions created from rezoning to city IN one. If we followed the default conversion of county B four general business to city B three general business, which is the default conversion, it would result in a zoning for the property that does not accommodate the planned uses and would disallow those uses. The next two criteria are typically combined. Three, the extent to which the ordinance promotes the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public, and four, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the individual property owner. The proposed rezoning will not jeopardize the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public. The annexation agreement provides for all necessary controls to minimize any potential impact that these proposed uses will have. Five, the suitability of the subject property for the zoned purposes. The site is generally suited for development. The property has access to the sewer, and DGS Properties or Stark, or excuse me, the parties to the agreement will be required to extend the municipal water line to the northern periphery of the property. And lastly, six, the length of the time the property has been vacant as zoned, considered in its local context. The property has been vacant since the spring of two thousand and nine, when the Malibu Lounge adult establishment, entertainment establishment that was located there closed, and has since been unused. In Plan Case twenty fifteen dash A dash zero one slash twenty-two sixty-one dash M dash fifteen, the city council has the following options. A, you may approve the proposed annexation, oh, actually, that's being moved to August third, so should I still go through the options? Okay, so that we left for August third. But just to note that on June twenty-fifth, the Plan Commission voted five a's to zero nays in approval of the annexation agreement, including the rezoning designation. Thank you.
Any questions from the council members right now? Aaron?
I was trying to follow this as best I could. It seems to be a pretty big piece of property here. The asphalt mixing and usage and stuff like that, and then you talked about ditches and water runoff and things of that nature. So, how much of a concern from an environmental perspective would, should we worry about the byproducts of the coal, of the asphalt? I don't know if we still have an issue with coal tar or any sort of carcinogens that are created from what's being manufactured there, and any sort of runoff into our water supply, what? I don't know how that works. I may not be asking the direct question, but I think the general idea is understood.
Yes. The regulations, as required by the federal, state, and at the local level, and particularly the I E P A, help to ensure mitigation of any potential negative impact. And I do know the parties here tonight could probably provide a little more detail into that. And of course, we have had our Public Works Division look into the drainage plans for the site in relation to the proposed uses, and we've received their approval of the site plan, and it meets their expectations of any potential impact of the proposed uses as shown on the site plan. Furthermore, I do know that, and the parties can enlighten us a little more into this, that they spoke with the Celine Drainage District, and that the Drainage District was comfortable with the proposed uses.
I would like to ask you, is this a new business, or is it moving from someplace else?
The company has a office in Champaign at front office. I believe this would be a new use within our region. They do have a similar use in Bloomington, but within our community here, it'd be new.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Whoops, we got another question. Mr. Mattigan?
So, I note that the nearest residence is a little over a thousand feet to the south on Airport Road, correct?
Yes.
So, even though that's a pretty healthy distance, just what would the screening be on the south edge of the property to alleviate that being, that this use being viewed from the residents?
Well, we require screening, typically, when a lot borders a residential district, say, we require screening of these storage areas, and then, I can pull up the exact numbers, it usually ranges around X amount of feet, have the X amount of shrubs, so I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but the screening trigger is actually, the screening requirement is actually triggered here because the storage areas would be potentially visible from the public right-of-way, and it wouldn't necessarily be visible from the residences or residentially zoned district, but because it could be visible from Cunningham Avenue, that's what triggers this requirement for screening. And I can pull up the requirements. We do ensure that in the agreement, that the requirements as listed in the ordinance are met.
Well, my question is specifically about being within view of the residents on Airport Road.
Because of the layout of the lot to the south, and the screening of the lot to the south owned by Mervis, and the layout on this site plan, that's not actually a concern at the time, because it won't be visible, these proposed areas, to those residential uses? I can pull up the map here.
Sure they are.
And it's more that it could be visible in the public right-of-way. So here on the map, we have, we have our subject property, oh, actually, it might be better with the zoning.
Well, actually, I think that aerial was a great map.
Oh, okay, great. I just want to kind of tie in.
Yeah, scroll back and blow that up a little bit.
Sure. So with the proposed material storage areas, they'd be in the, towards the western portion of the lot, which would be obscured from vision with these uses to the south, including, I believe, I would assume that's an agricultural use, and then we have some type of commercial industrial use here.
Where you had your cursor is the residence.
Oh.
Alright. So what, so then, I mean, that's a direct line of sight from that residence to the south edge of this, of this property.
Mm-hmm. Then that would trigger the landscaping requirement, which we would ensure through the landscaping plans submitted to the city as part of the agreement.
Okay.
And I do apologize for that. I just want to check on the zoning here. Oh, yes, R two, you are obviously correct. I apologize for that.
No worries. Because I think, you know, you have, this is probably agricultural over here to the left. Well, it says it's commercial, but I know that there are some homes there as well. So I was just curious if that was being addressed. That's all I have. I take that back, I have one more. So, noise ordinance, would this be subject to the city's noise ordinance then? Could there be twenty-four-seven recycling going on out there, or is it going to stop at a certain period of time every day?
In terms of the details of the operations, I believe that the parties could provide maybe some more of those details, and I know they'll have to meet all applicable regulations from the state and at our level to ensure...
I mean, does Mervis have a restriction now on operating hours, or?
I would not know that, and I, but I can bring that to the August third.
That'd be fine. Thanks.
Aaron?
I don't, it's not, not a direct question for you, so thanks, but you raise an issue that I have some questions about, about when we have a city of Urbana and Champaign County, we have, I don't know, basically a street or something divides the two entities, and so there's a big fair or whatever is going on, and then across the street you have houses that are actually for the city of Urbana. Is there an agreement that we have with the county or something that says they're supposed to shut things down at a particular hour, or have some sort of noise, or? I'm just trying to understand, is there some sort of agreement that we have with the county, when, with their function is taking place, but it's affecting the residents of Urbana?
To my knowledge, no.
Well, we have the mile and a half buffer, where we have a lot of say about zoning. We get to approve uses for a lot of property within a mile and a half of the border, but I don't know if that speaks to noise ordinance or that kind of thing.
Well, I just have some residents who are saying that whatever band is playing or whatever tractor pull is going over at the county fairgrounds, it goes on to eleven o'clock or whatever, even on a weekday, and I didn't know if we had some sort of understanding or agreement that we could come to, or something to help alleviate that concern, but I, you just reminded me of it, I apologize for it.
Dennis?
If my memory is correct, the city does have the right to impose hours of delivery and also control lighting and the diffusion of light on the property for industrial areas, and we've done that, I believe, in, on North Lincoln Avenue with certain recycling centers where they're crushing, where crushed rock is being stored, and there's fence requirements in some instances, and there's also requirements of dampening dust, dust mitigation, because we have, we have a recycling center on North Lincoln where there's a residential house right next to it. So I know that we do impose some kinds of restrictions, even in, you know, terms of operation of an, you know, of a business. So I think that would be something we could explore, and maybe want to include or have a conversation about it when this comes back to us.
Okay. Mr. Simon?
Once the property is annexed, obviously, all the Urbana noise and other ordinances apply.
The question is, if it's just outside the city?
I'm not aware...
Can we, do we have any agreements, or, you know, because we say that noise can't go beyond the property line, but if the property line is coming from the county?
I'm not aware of any...
Well, if it's bothering people, maybe we talk to the county about it and see what we can do.
There may be some kind of an agreement with the fairgrounds operator for the fairgrounds, but I'm not aware of a general standing agreement with the county.
Okay, we will talk about this again in August, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero seven dash zero seven eight, an ordinance revising the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen annual budget, and this is for the TIF three surplus. And we have our finance director, Elizabeth Hannan, to talk about this.
I think this will be a little more straightforward, but this is, this is basically cleanup. As, as you all know, you were informed at the time, we paid eleven point six million dollars in surplus TIF three funds to the county to be returned to the various taxing districts, including the city of Urbana. That wasn't planned for, so it wasn't included in the budget, so we're asking to go back and amend last year's budget, just, just to cover that.
So move.
That's what I was going to say. I basically...
Okay, Aaron Ammons, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any discussion? Charlie?
Just out of curiosity, how much is, is the township getting from?
I, I did not bring that information with me, but I would guess it's a relatively small amount, because their tax rate is relatively small. So it's, it's apportioned out based on the current tax rates for all those taxing districts.
But it's over several years, right?
Well, the entire amount of the eleven point six million is apportioned based on the current tax rates. So I can, if you want, I can email you that information tonight or tomorrow morning.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have, oh, Eric?
Yeah, because strictly speaking, we should do a budget amendment for the township also. I mean, I know that's not your province, but I assume that legally, that's, that's what we need to do, is that correct?
We, we don't necessarily need to amend the budget to receive more revenue. We, you know, we're receiving, we're, all the taxing districts are receiving additional revenue. In fact, this amendment just deals with the expenditure side, where the city paid the county. Eventually, we'll clean up, that, we actually paid the money out in June, but we didn't receive the distribution from the county until July, so we'll clean that up at some point, but that's in the current year budget, and this is in last year's budget.
Okay. Mr. Simon?
In answer to your question, how much the county is supposed to receive or did receive... receive, I believe, or, excuse me, the township, the township received $272,557.25.
Okay. We have a motion. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have a group of appointments, staff appointments, and appointments to boards and commissions, and reappointments to boards and commissions. Anybody have any questions?
Eric, do you want to read them just for the public record?
Finance Department, City Accountant Sophie Pham, Accounting Supervisor Chris Francisco, Human Relations Commission, Janice Mitchell, Plan Commission Barry Ackerson, Zoning Board of Appeals Harvey Welch, Zoning Board of Appeals Jonah Weiskopf and Matt Cho, and reappointments, Design Review Board Kim Smith, Library Board Jeffrey Bant, Mel Farrell, Anna Merritt, the MOR Development Review Board Kim Smith, the Plan Commission Tyler Fitch, Public Arts Commission Jason Patterson, Public Arts Commission John Morrison, Tree Commission Jeffrey Dawson, and Zoning Board of Appeals Nancy Yuchman. Diane?
I move approval of these appointments. Do we do them?
It's just, I think one, one motion is enough.
Then I'll leave it at that.
And I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Aaron?
I just had a question as to how, so basically, these are all appointments that are under your purview, and do we, I don't know, I don't know how this got by me. I had someone who was interested in the Human Relations Commission, and I don't know if I just missed an email or something on that, or how does that work for us to send you potential names and things like that?
Well, we put them on the website, and, you know, so we'll try to, if you have somebody who's interested in something, just let me know, and we'll, we have a form for them to fill out, to submit. So, if they're not, if you want somebody to be on the Human Relations Commission, if we're all full there, I could suggest other commissions that might need somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, and there's no further business at this meeting, so I will adjourn it. Turn it over to Aaron Ammons.
I'm going to motion for a five-minute recess, then we will resume.